The village of Peatown Board, Village Board Meeting for November 26, 2012 will begin by saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Huffke.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsyth.
Here.
Mr. Luttor. Okay, let the minutes show that we officially have a quorum and can officially conduct business. And the first order of business will be the approval of the minutes of the November 12, 2012 Regular Village Board Meeting. Trustees, if you will review those minutes, and I will entertain a motion to approve them as submitted, or if you find a reason to correct us, let me know what that might be.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of November 13th Board Meeting as presented.
Did we put the wrong date on it?
Yeah.
On the agenda, it's November 13th, thank you. It's on the minutes correctly. Okay, motion by trustee Huffke to approve the minutes of November 13, 2012. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Callahan. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Present.
And Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Okay, minutes approved as presented. Next item of business is the accounts payable and payroll. Trustees, in your package, we have the pay period ending 11/10 for $45,539.46. Under accounts payable, bills from the general fund totaling $14,915.14. Bills from the motor fuel tax fund totaling $5,426.23. Bills from the water and sewer fund totaling $6,194.17. And bills from the police pension fund totaling $1,700. The grand total of those four categories of bills is $28,235.54. We have a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee...
Second.
Forsyth to approve the, and pay the bills. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, bills will be paid as noted in there. This is the time for any non-agenda public comment, so anybody from the public who has an item that they would like to discuss that is not on the agenda further down, we will be happy to discuss it at this time. Hearing none, I'm going to move down to the reports of committees. The trustees, you will find in your package, the report from the clerk, collector, and the treasurers on the financial income of the past month. And if there are no questions on that, we will move forward to the police chief report. Chief?
I, uh... I'm a man without words. I know it's hard.
Rarely happens, doesn't it?
I know it rarely happens. The holiday season is approaching fast. I would like to make the board aware that on December 8th, between 9:00 and 1:00 o'clock, we're going to have a food drive for the American Legion in Peatown for their food collection. Like I said, it's slated for December 8th, between 9:00 and 1:00, at Burkott's Food. Any food collection, people want to bring anything into the village, we'll collect it, make sure it gets to the American Legion for their food baskets, which will be distributed on the 15th according to the Legion's plans.
Okay. And these posters will be up in various places around town.
Yes, will be at the post office and...
Thank you for that, chief. Uh, the engineers report, any updates, Anne?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give some updates on some of the construction projects going on in the village. First Street Water Main Project is completed except for the restoration. Contractor was going to seed, and we told him that it was too late in the year to seed. He may take that on the extra cost and sod that himself. It's okay to sod as long as the ground isn't frozen, so I think that's what the contractor's going to choose to do, just so he can finish out the job, so if he does that, we'll close out the job. Otherwise, it'll have to wait until spring. The MFT resurfacing project has been completed, they finished the stone shoulders, so we're just waiting to get all of the quantities back, and then we'll be preparing a payout request. The sidewalk program has been completed. Tom Blogg really followed that job and has approved the work, and that is coming in for payment. And the Conrad Street lift station, the base lab, has been poured. The service panel was replaced and reconfigured. The automatic transfer switch was installed. Nikor was actually out there today doing the service, which was great. And then, of course, we're waiting for the generator, which is the big thing. That is scheduled for delivery on December 12th. So, that's the update, if anybody has any questions. That's all I have.
All right, any questions of the village engineer? Hearing none, I'm going to move forward. I'm going to move down for a minute to the new business for voice contract 315 and the Salvation Army bills. So, come on up to the microphone. You have your assistant with you?
Yep, backup.
Okay. Do you want it... Okay, scout, you want to tell us your name?
Michael Hunting.
Michael.
Hunting.
Hunting.
Spell.
Just the way it sounds. Now, it's officially in the record.
The old dairy that used to put that down. Stephen Hunting.
All right, gentlemen?
We're just requesting to do the Salvation Army, um, leveling at docks and the post office and Midwest Bank, First Menace Bank, December 1st and the 8th.
And you'd be doing that from 9:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh... Oh, at the bank and then the post office until noon. Okay. So, yeah, that... Trustees.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Forsyth to approve the request, seconded by trustee Riker. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Congratulations, gentlemen, the motion passed. The remarks were approved. Ring the bells. Not a lot of money. Okay, they did that so you could leave if you want to leave.
Okay.
Stay if you want to stay.
I was a little interested though, let's go on, so I saved a little bit. That's funny.
All right, we'll go back to the regular order of the agenda, which is old business. At our last meeting, there was a vote on the joint resolution regarding local control of the airport authority, and the Board voted to adopt the resolution contingent upon the insertion of language restating the opposition to the third airport, and the contingency attached to it also asked that all the other communities, Crete, Beecher, and Moni, consider adopting that amended type resolution. And all three of the other villages basically adopted the resolution as presented. And as such, we checked with the village attorney, and because there was a contingency of approving it with the insertion dependent upon the other communities adopting the revised language, in effect, the resolution that we passed is now null and void because the contingencies were not followed. So, we have several choices here. One of the choices is we can go on and it sits where it is. The other choice is we can have a motion to reconsider the action that we would like to take on, the resolution and the references to the two Senate bills. And that would require a motion to reconsider and a second.
Make a motion, we reconsider.
Okay, motion by trustee Huffke to reconsider, seconded by trustee Wicker. Clerk, please call the roll. Getting ahead of you, aren't you?
Reconsider the past resolution?
Reconsider our... Yes, the resolution, taking an action on the resolution, because our previous action is null and void.
Just on the action, okay. Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
And Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Now, having said that, the next option is what do you choose to do as a board with these two, with the resolutions? That incidentally, if you would propose something, the, uh... It would become a new resolution, number 12 dash R-20. And, yeah, that would be it, so... Discussion, offer of a thought?
As I said before, I'm for the resolution if it had linked that one paragraph or a couple sentences that restated our opposition to it. Everything else in the resolution seemed right on.
Okay.
I would agree with what Chris said, too.
My agreement, we made a condition with the other villages, I don't think we should break that iron ring deal. We've worked awfully hard, awful lot of many years trying to get us together, so we've got some power, because that piece of property is in nobody's jurisdiction.
Yep.
Absolutely not. And we ask those people, why don't you somebody annex in to give us some teeth? This is going back years ago. The only way we got a headway, we got a headway, we finally got four of us to stand together to do something. And I don't think we should turn away from that. I really don't. I think it's a terrible risk.
Okay.
I don't think we're here for the airport or against it. I think what we should be concerned about more than anything else is that we should have a say in this. Should the airport come, I mean, we should have the ability to be able to represent to citizens, the residents of Peatown. If we don't adopt something, we're not going to have that ability.
I'm in favor of approving the resolution as is previously drafted, but with the amendment to the sixth paragraph referencing our neutrality, I think we do need to state our opposition to it, and I think that we can use the language which was suggested at the last meeting. And I also believe that we can even include language that says, we agree with, you know, the message, if you will, or the bond, the union, whatever the case may be with the other communities, but we believe that it is important to restate our opposition to the airport as a village, just so that that's not subject to being misinterpreted. And I think that can also be included in any letter that may be sent to Senator Hutchinson, same thing. Essentially, we are of the opinion that, but for all, you know, the other terms, we're in agreement, but the one provision is we need to reiterate our opposition to the actual construction of the airport.
Does somebody want to put this in a form of a resolution, it would be Resolution 12 dash R-20, dealing with the local control and airport authority?
If I could, and we've got some language that I'd really like to nail down a little bit.
For clarity.
For clarity, and so we make sure that everybody knows what's going in the resolution. And Attorney Mars at the last meeting drafted some comments that he shared with us at that point in time. One was to add an additional paragraph, whereas the village of Peatown reiterates its continued opposition to the construction of a third airport in eastern Will County, and then there's amendment to the, well, it'll then become the third paragraph.
An additional whereas.
Yeah, it is whereas, and the insertion of the language, assuming a third airport is built despite the deposition, and then it continues on as was presented to you. Is that the language that is being proposed? I just don't want to write the wrong thing.
I'm in favor of that language. I do think, though, that, just maybe for clarity, the sixth paragraph has to do with the resolution as being neutral. It may be somewhat of a conflict if in two paragraphs above it we say that we are against the airport, so it may be worth striking that paragraph.
I think the language in that section says that the need for an airport, we're neutral on the need for an airport as opposed to the concept of an airport, so you're getting into lawyer language here.
Gotcha.
So...
Yeah.
Can the two coexist together, or can they?
Personally, I would like to see that sixth paragraph stricken, but that's, that may not be the opinion of the other members.
The chair awaits a motion of some kind.
I move to...
I make a motion, we adopt a resolution, go on.
I move to adopt the resolution with the language as recited by Administrator Gray with the deletion of the sixth whereas provision.
Okay, is there a... Motion by trustee Callahan, is there a second? Trustee Wicker seconds that motion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Okay, that's Resolution 12 dash R-20 regarding the local control of the airport and the Airport Authority Board. That motion is reworded, amended, that motion officially passed. Okay, moving on. We are going to the ordinance for the levying and assessing of the 2012 taxes for the village.
The next two items on the agenda are complimentary. First item is the 2012 tax levy ordinance. The levy ordinance stipulates the maximum levy the village may establish. Staff is required a levy ordinance reflecting a 4% increase in the levy. The 4% increase is intended to capture structures not currently assessed on the tax rolls. Those structures currently assessed will experience a levy increase equivalent to the 2012 Consumer Price Index at 3%. This does not mean the tax bills will go up 3%, as the tax bill is a function of additional factors such as assessment and the action of other governmental units. It only means the total amount of money the village may request collectively can increase by the percentage applicable. These standards indicate that corporate and special purpose levies, when extended, would increase from $550,000 to $570,000 without the corporate bond and interest. As the levy is increased to stipulated a 5% or less, a public hearing is not required. And again, the levy under general corporate purposes for general administration, total general administration is $88,200. Police Department is $177,300. Total general corporate purposes is $265,500. Under special tax levies, municipal auditing fund is $5,000. Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund is $10,000. Social Security Fund is $45,000. Medicare Fund is $7,500. Total to be levied for special liability unemployment and workers' compensation fund is $72,000. Police Protection Fund is $80,000. Police Pension Fund is $85,000. The total of those funds is $570,000 compared to $550,000 last year.
Okay. And this would be ordinance 12 dash 24.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Does this help us get a little bit closer to our, the police pension?
We've increased it $5,000. There's more than just...
Right, but it's helping.
Yes, we have increased it $5,000 from last year.
Against the liability for everybody else who doesn't follow that. We could get into a lot of history on that, but basically, when there was a switch from being part of the IMRF to a separate police pension fund.
To the union.
The money paid by the village into that for all those years didn't come out, only the individual contributions. So, we're making up for money that was contributed to another fund that didn't transfer. Okay, this is ordinance 12 dash 24, the adoption of a tax levy for 2012 is... I didn't have a motion yet, did I? Okay. Trustee, who wants to...
Motion.
Motion by trustee Huffke, seconded by trustee Wicker to pass the tax levy ordinance for 2012, that'd be ordinance 12 dash 24. We've got another part to this coming up shortly. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, tax levy is passed as noted. Next item has to do with the resolution for the allocating to individual funds and the tax extension limitation law as amended.
The tax levy at this point in time is always a bit of an educated guess, because one factor in that is the EAV, and we don't get our certified EAV until next April. So, there are times when the county clerk has to make adjustments to that. In the event that has to happen, the following resolution basically directs the county clerk which funds we would like to have reduced in what order. And they are the municipal auditing fund, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, the Social Security Fund, the Medicare Fund, liability unemployment workers' compensation fund, and the police pension fund in that order. Sometimes that needs to be done, and sometimes it doesn't. But with, without us adopting a directing resolution, it's up to the county clerk at his or her discretion where they want to cut, and that's not something we would like to leave to them.
Okay, this would be Resolution 12 dash R-21, allocating the tax levy to individual funds of the village property tax extension limitation law as amended. Is a motion to that effect.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Huffke, seconded by trustee Huster, to adopt Resolution 12 dash R-21, allocating the tax levy to individual funds of the village property tax extension limitation law as amended. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, the resolution officially passes. Now, the next item is because we decided to have one meeting in November, December, rather than two, and so as a result, I don't know what she said, yeah, we do. Because we basically decided we're not going to hold a meeting on Christmas Eve, we need to authorize the paying of the usual and customary bills subject to ratification at the January meeting. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So...
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Riker to pay the regular, usual and customary bills subject to ratification in January. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, officially passes. Moving on down the agenda, Karen has no questions, we'll talk to her after the meeting. Correspondence, communications, and petitions. A letter from the American Legion reminding us that their needy children's holiday program is taking place, and the canned goods, as we noted earlier, the canned good drive on December 8th is part of it, but they also take each kid on a shopping trip with $100 per child to be spent on clothing.
And Kmart's going to give us 15%, so they can have $115 of discount.
Even better. When they're finished, the kids will come back after their shopping trip to the Legion Hall and have a hot dogs, chips, and pop, the usual things the kids like. And when they're finished with the meal, each child will line up to receive an age-appropriate gift, and most of these gifts are provided by Toys for Tots out of Joliet. They also receive, the families will receive the food that's being distributed. Now, the program requires a lot on behalf of the Legion, and not only are we donating food, but we're also, we need donations of cash. So, they're expecting this to cost approximately $11,000.
Eleven to twelve grand.
And I guess what we're saying is, this is a flat-out encouragement to anybody listening or anybody here to make a cash donation to the local American Legion, uh, needy children's holiday program, so that they can continue this and have it very successful, and...
And the names are given to us by the school district and churches. We don't pick them out, they're given to us. They help us, who are needy and who needs the help. So, it's been a program for a long time.
Yeah, the resources in order to do this have, in order to make sure that the truly needy people get it. I guess that's what a lot of people worry about. Does it go to the people who have the greatest need? The system that they've evolved over the years to come up with a list of folks has been really good. I can tell you from having been on the school side of it for a number of years, it's really very deserving people. This is going to take place on Saturday, December 15th, so we need to get our donations into them before that time period. And you could just drop it off at the Legion, or give it to somebody who belongs to the Legion.
Well, even if you drop it off here, Donna will take care of it.
That's right.
Right, Donna?
Yeah, our courier.
And I think that's what that is for, too, so they're going to have something set up.
Yeah, probably we're going to have a donation thing here, too. Is that what you're saying?
Basket, yeah.
A basket, okay, for the food collection, too, so...
Yeah, we want to thank our police department and firemen, they help us every year with the collection of foods, and they help sort out boxes and things, because it's quite a big meal that we give them, turkey and ham and all the fixings, you know, so hopefully everybody has a nice Christmas. It's the whole intent here.
And following along the theme, this past weekend, the Girl Scout in town hosted a downtown holiday celebration, and I would like to, at the next board meeting, officially recognize them, it's the second year they've done this, and a lot of work that goes into it.
And they sing well.
Yes, they do.
You've got to give them credit.
Any other announcements to come before the group? Okay, motion by trustee Hupkey to adjourn the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for November 26, 2012, seconded by...
Seconded.
We'll give it to... Both sides are engaged. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Reichert.
Yes.
Okay, meeting officially adjourned, thank you.